...time job. So, I'm working on disability to get back. I need to get fixed. So, um, temporary disability and I'm gonna get my, um, what do you call it, physical therapy and stuff.
Okay.
And then I'll get to work again. So, I'm not giving, I don't give up easy.
Appreciate having you.
Yeah. You got freedom for a while.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger, how you doing? I'm gonna ask you to, uh, go to the podium and give us your recommendations.
I will do that. I understand that's after the two presentation. Yeah, but they happen to do that instead.
Okay.
Except at that.
Alright, thanks.
Hey, I haven't had a chance to see you. I'll, I'll be there on, on Saturday. It's Hippie, it's Hippie Fest that day. So, but I, I wanted to take the time to come there and honor your, your wife. So, I'm very sorry.
A week of Saturday, yeah.
Yes, yes. So, the 12th. I got it, I got it down.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Have a little spot here tonight.
Yeah, I can really spread out.
Sometimes you need to.
I know. When, when he wasn't here the other day, I'm like, okay, I have all this space. No, it's just that, uh, our attorney's not here, so I'm like, oh, I can really spread out. It's a little tight in this space when we have a lot of materials in front of us.
I now call to order the budget work session of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August, actually, it should be Thursday, August 3rd, 2017, at 6:30 PM.
Mayor, who's this?
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissions to study issues, to gather and analyze information, and to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during the work sessions. No public comments will be allowed tonight on the budget. However, it will be allowed during the two public hearings that we have scheduled for September 6th and September 19th at 6:30 PM. And now, we're gonna go to the item number one, which is the General Fund Budget, Enterprise Fund, CIP. Mr. LaCouris, you ready for your presentation?
Yes, and to begin the, the presentation, Ron Herring will start off.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Tonight, we have the first budget workshop, maybe the only one, on, um, the fiscal year 2018 budget. Uh, but first, I'd just like to thank the department heads. They've worked hard on the budget. They keep it bare bones. They've been a big help to me during the budget process. They deserve a lot of thanks. Also like to thank the Budget Advisory Committee. They've worked very hard on the budget. They, um, met with every department and, uh, given us a lot of questions on things. But with that, I'd like to start the, uh, presentation here. The first slide is showing the proposed budget as it currently is today at $55,862,805. Last year's budget was $55,231,591, an increase of $631,000. Uh, the five largest funds, the General Fund at $23.7 million, the Water and Sewer Fund at $16 million, Sanitation Fund at $4.9 million, Penny Fund at $3.1, Stormwater Fund at $2.3 million. Those total 50 point, almost 2 million, and those five funds alone are, are 90% of the budget. Capital Improvement Projects, we got budgeted next year, $8,040,000. And Capital Outlay Equipment, Computers, Vehicles, and other such things as $1,238,000. For a total of $9,279,723, and that number is included in the $55 million above. Budget assumptions for the total city, all funds are balanced. The General Fund's balanced without using any unassigned fund balance. Property Taxes, we have the property values increased 7.5% budgeted. Millage Rate is unchanged at 5.42, uh, for a total dollar increase of $588,816. And the General Fund portion is $567,129, and the CRA Fund increase is $21,687. Some more assumptions. We got a salary increase funded at 3.5% for, to about $630,000. Police and Fire Union increases are not determined yet, but we funded, uh, 4% in the budget for them. Health, Dental, Life Insurance, we budgeted 10%. We don't know the actual increase yet, but we've budgeted 10% or $310,000. Lot of it due to a catastrophic claim that is out there. These insurance increases are funded by some insurance reserves we have. Workers' Comp increased about 8%, $32,539, again funded by insurance reserves. Property Insurance, 15% increase. Uh, latest numbers is it might be 9% for an increase of $80,986. It's also funded by some reserves we have. Retirement Accounts are funded at the actuarial requirement, police at 8.14% and fire at $728,576. And general employees, 8.7%. New Positions in the Budget. We have, in Fire Department, Deputy Chief EMS Coordinator, Firefighter Paramedic. As you, I don't know if you know, but the SAFER Grant that we applied for, for the four paramedics, it looks like, we're not sure if, it doesn't seem like we're gonna get that grant, but we still had some money budgeted already for a couple positions. For Fiscal 2,018, the, the county is now giving us 25% more for the EMS Coordinator Position. Previously, it was 75%, so we're getting a full 100%, so that'll help out. And in Planning, we have, we have a new City Planner Position in the Budget. And just to show you the change in the budget from the book that you got on June 20th to August 3rd, 2017, for the total city, we've gone to $55,862,805. Your book had $55,442,445, for an increase of $420,360. The General Fund changes on a future slide. It's about $108,000. The SAFER Grant was eliminated. That was in a separate fund for about $361,000. CRA Adjustment for Change in Property Taxes, that's a small change, about $7,000 decrease. Penny Fund Adjustments for Additional Projects, we have a little over $500,000 and more, uh, Penny Projects that are in the budget now. Sanitation, Stormwater Golf Course Funds, Interfund Transfer has been adjusted. And Water Sewer Fund Change is also on a future slide. It's about $184,000. Going to the General Fund. The General Fund Budget currently today is $23,729,065. In your book, it was $23,622,86, an increase of $108,779. Uh, the reasons for the change, a new Planner Position, $61,000. That includes benefits. Fire Personnel Adjustments, before we had the two paramedics and they came to about $180,000, but now, since one of the positions is a paramedic, the other one's a deputy chief with the benefits, it comes a little bit more, so we had to adjust the fire personnel to a positive $51,000 there. Capital allocated to Penny, we moved some stuff that was in the General Fund, $125,000 to the Penny Fund. There was a capital request for Riverside Field Fence. It was decided it wasn't needed, so we took that out for $25,000. An Impact Study for Police, Fire, Library, General Government, and Recreation Impacts, looks, per the ordinance, were required to have an impact fee study done on those every three years. It, I got an estimate of a cost. It's $55,000. Uh, some money for Historical District Study, $20,000. And the Trolley Increase, we found out it's increasing a little bit to $37,502, an increase of $24,53, but from what I hear, we get seven-day service now. Um, the, the balance is a reserve for unfunded items, which can be used on later slides, to $68,831, for the total of $108,779. Again, the new position, basically the same ones for the other slide, but now it's got the totals on it. The EMS Deputy Chief, the Deputy Chief EMS Coordinator, $155,922, that includes benefits. Firefighter Paramedic, $76,000. City Planning, City Planner, $61,000, for a total of $293,000. And mentioned down below there for that 25%, here we mentioned that, for that extra 25% is gonna give the city almost $39,000 as part of the EMS Contract. This graph, I always like to show from the history of the millage rate for the last 10, 11 years. It's sort of interesting way, like the millage rate started at 4.3089, went up to 5.45, stayed there until, you can't tell, but there's a little drop to 5.42 there at the end. But also, the taxable values to the right, that was the highest it was, was the $1,938,896,972. And then it decreased 33% down to 2013 to that $1,298,345,335. And as you can see, it's been increasing since then. And then down on the bottom, where the revenues went from $7.8 million in 2008, down to $6.7 million, and then back up to today's budget of $8.6 million. Capital Improvement Projects. These are the Capital Improvement Projects that are in the budget. City Hall Building Improvements. I tried to, uh, sort these by the type of improvement, like General Government, Public Safety. City Hall Building Improvements, $65,000. Public Safety, Fire Truck and Equipment, $677,000. Police Vehicles, $352,000. Fire Station Apparatus Bay Doors, $72,768. Fire Staff Vehicle, $50,000. Public Safety Building Security, $45,000, for a total about $1.2 million of Public Safety. Transportation, Brick Street and Road Reconstruction, $350,000. Annclot River Dredging, $300,000. Roadway Reconfiguration, Walmart Huey, $125,000. And some Public Work Yard Improvements, that came to about $95,000, for a total Transportation of $870,000. Culture and Recreation, Cultural Center Exterior Renovation, like they did to this building with the bricks and the windows for the Cultural Center on 19, on Alternate 19, about $650,000. Swimming Pool Year One of Three, $500,000, for that construction. Craig Park Tennis Courts Playground Equipment, $30,000. Parking Lot Improvements, Library Cultural Center, $25,000, for a total Cultural Recreation of $1.2 million. Physical Environment, Stormwater, Penn Street, $776,000. Citywide GIS Stormwater Mapping, $200,000. Highland Avenue Vista Place, $109,000. Palm Avenue Between Tarpon and Golf, that's almost $60,000, for total Stormwater of $1,146,000. Uh, getting into the Physical Environment, Water and Sewer, I'd sort of totaled these by, uh, by the departments they're in, 'cause there was a lot of, uh, smaller items, but Water Plant Improvements, $978,200. Now, $675,000 of this is for, is for new wellfields that they're looking for. Water Supply Wellfield Improvements, another $85,000. Water Distribution Improvements, $612,000. Meter Repair Changeouts, $226,000, for a total of $1.9 million of water improvements. Sewage Collection Includes Seabreeze Drive Sewering, $740,000, of the $1.1,3148. Sewage Treatment Plant Improvements, $292,000. Sewage Lift Station Improvements, $340,000. And some items in the non-departmental of $20,000. For Total Sewer, $1.6 million. Total Water and Sewer, $3,557,000. And Total Capital Improvement Projects of $8,40,867. And now, we're getting at some positions that were cut from the budget and, and they're unfunded currently, but that were, items that were requested by departments. Uh, we had a position that was requested by the Police Department, a police officer with cost of $75,000. Some more, some capital that was cut from the, uh, Budget. And hopefully, if we have year-end reserves, we could hopefully pay for it from reserves, or if not, we can put, add it to the Budget. City Clerk Office Remodel, $50,000. Fire Stations, 69 and 70 Improvements, $30,000. Craig Park Shade Structure, $25,000. City Hall Additional Security Cameras, $15,000. Public Works Security Cam Upgrade, $10,000. City Hall Honning for Handicap Entrance, $7,500. Roof at Community Center, $5,000. Cultural Center Interior Painting, $4,000. For total, there are a total there of $146,500. There's gonna be another slide, but these items, we think that these were more critical than the next slide.
Yep, let me, let me explain that a bit. These really weren't items that were cut. These are items that, uh, were out there, and, uh, we believe either by some savings that we've got, um, some money, um, hopefully that we save from this year, or maybe some of the unknowns goes down. We're hoping to fund those within those. Um, as opposed to the second page, the second page you'll see are actually cut, and we don't think we'll be able to fund them in this year, and, uh, they'll probably be funded in, in next year. So, really, when you see the one police officer position, you see these lists, we're hoping to find some way in this year's budget through the mechanisms I made to try to fund all or, or most of these things.
And some more capital that was unfunding, with the funding to be determined. Roads and Streets, a new mini excavator, $70,000. A trailer for the excavator, $15,000. For Parks, 12, I guess 12-inch wood chipper, $54,000. A new Surface Rake, $45,000. For Recreation, a 2430 Passenger Bus with Wheelchair Lift, $60,000. And for Recreation, a Walk Wall at the Community Center, $30,000, for a total of $274,350. And just a slide on the Water and Sewer Fund, second largest fund in the city. Budget currently is $16,028,879. In your book, it's, uh, from June 20th, it was $15,844,776, for an increase of $184,103. Uh, the increases are Utility Billing Office Remodel, $30,000. Water and Sewer Impact Fee Study of $25,000. And Water and Sewer Interfund Transfer Adjustment of $129,000, for a total of $184,103. Sanitation Fund. Sanitation Fund is the third largest fund in the city with a budget of $4.9 million. And the revenues in the Sanitation Fund are the sanitation fees of $3,775,000. Recycling Fees, $531,820. Yard Waste Fees, $327,984, for a total of $4,634,804. And just a slide on the Stormwater Fund. It's the fifth largest fund in the city with a budget of $2.3 million. Stormwater Fee Revenues will be $1,416,680 next year. And the, the rate for the equivalent Stormwater Unit per Household would be $7.15. And just the Budget Process going forward, a second Budget Workshop if necessary on August 10th, or at a work session at the conclude, or a work session at the conclusion of the August 15th Regular Session. August 21st, the Trim Notices will be mailed by the County. September 6th, a Wednesday, First Public Hearing on Tentative Millage and Tentative Budget. September 19th, a Tuesday, Second and Final Public Hearing. And October 1st, First Day of the New Year.
I wanna talk a little bit about, um, those of you who've been on the Board, has, has seen this pretty much every year that I've brought forward on the Salary and Classification Plan Amendments and Pay Increases for 2018. The first thing, as we've done however many years I remember and stuff, we are gonna ask for adjustment in the salary ranges of 1.5 at the bottom and the top. Um, we've done that 1.5 on each end, probably at least the last five years. The second and most important thing of this document are the Pay Raises. Again, you see a graduated pay raise. Um, we've talked about these in previous years, how we're trying to get our lower-paid employees up to, up to a higher wage and livable wage. This year, you see the chart of where the breakdown of the salary is and what the raises are. I can tell you that when this goes into place, that there'll only be five employees, and I think four of them are part-time. They'll be making under $12 an hour, and by our, by next year, next year's budget, we should have all employees at $12 an hour, without causing compression of those people who are along the salary range above them. And that's done by these graduated, um, steps of these ranges. So, this is the range. If you go to the next chart to, to show how that kinda looks, see in the middle, the predominant of the employees, 106 are getting the 3.5% raise. And then we've got a group of employees, um, number of...
You've got 14 employees getting 5%, 58 employees getting 4% increase, the 106 at 3.5%. 41 employees getting 3%, and 25 employees getting 2.5%. And just, this also, this doesn't include the Fire and Union Con, um, Contract Employees. This is just the general employees.
So, you can see it, the curve is a pretty well, you know, curve where the average is, is 3.5, but again, we're able to move people up and, uh, move it without causing compression. Um, when we do these, we look at every individual employee and where they fall to make sure there is fairness in there. So, every employee is in the session, is looked at where the cutoff points are. So, again, we keep moving forward and getting our lower-paid employees up, while maintaining, um, a distance between employees who've been here longer or earning more. On the next page, uh, we talk about who the salary is, who it covers. As you see in, in H, um, obviously, the City Clerk and myself are determined by you. We're asking for an 8% raise for the City Clerk because of what you're gonna see later in Number Nine, um, increasing the positions of both Deputy City Clerk and City Clerk. Mine would be set at 2.5 or less, as determined by the City Commission. Then we get into some of the changes that we've had. Um, you'll see some different things, some regrading, um, some positions changing. Most of them are, are very minimal, one or two grades. Um, a lot of them have to do with additional duties that these people have. Where you see the Police Dispatcher Position in Five and Six. One is to establish a Supervisory Position, which is required now. And, you know, if you question the Chief, it's about, it's required to have a step, um, in the process of Communication Services. And for the regular dispatches, their salaries have gotten way out of line, um, with other agencies. Other agencies have brought the salaries up tremendously and has really left us behind, so we had to do the boost now. Again, we see a couple regrades, a meter reader, utility billing technician, um, a regrade of the Executive Office Coordinator and the Deputy City Clerk. We've got a couple library positions that were pretty low, that were, were moving up, um, both of them, I believe, two grades. Um, we've got about three to four people, I think it is, um, in Public Works. These are a lot of our people who are doing the in-house works and have talents, whether it be an electrician or other things. This is probably saving us, it's a tremendous amount of money by doing these projects in-house. And these people who are doing it and the skills that we don't have to hire people for, are saving much more than these 7.5% increases that they're getting to move them up. They're substantially paying for themselves and doing these projects within the city, and we wanna reward them for that. Of course, we've got the Realization, the Fire Department Positions. I will say about that posi, the position of the Deputy Fire Chief and the Planning and Zoning Department. When I bring this forward to you at the Commission Meeting, it's a resolution. This all's a resolution. We always usually approve it at the last meeting in, in August. I'm, am gonna ask for that Deputy Chief Position and the Planning Position to be effective that night. Um, those are the only two I'm gonna ask there. The importance of the Deputy Chief Position is that gives them time to do the three promotions that's gonna cause, because we've got a domino effect. So that on September 6th, when we have the, the promotions, we'll have all six promotions, including the Chief's Position at probably one of the biggest ceremonies they've had around for promotion. By doing that early, we can do all those promotions together instead of waiting. The Planning Position is very needed, and we've got some good candidates that we're looking for, and we need to get on that right away. So, those would be the only two things that would go into effect if you approve this on the 15th. The rest of them, of course, take place on, on the 1st. The Number 18 is just a provision for four of our employees who've been topped out for over two years and not getting any funds, just to get a percent and a half in a lump sum. Kinda have a reward for being topped out for so long. We thought we should do something for them. We haven't done anything in the last three years for those topped-out people. So, a 1.2 lump, uh, 1.5 lump sum, we thought, um, would be appropriate, and that, that deals with four employees. And then, of course, the effective date of the, again, this is, this, um, after input tonight, this will be on your Commission Meeting for August 15th, um, in the resolution form that it has to be for your approval.
Good.
And now, we'll turn it over to how you wanna, how you wanna run the process of the rest of the meeting.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, uh, for us to comment, ask questions about the, on the presentation. And then I would like to, after that, I would like to ask the Budget Advisory Committee to give us their recommendation, so. I wanna start by, Mr. LaCouris, for complimenting you. Uh, Mr. Herrick, the staff, the Budget Advisory Committee, for all the work they're doing and provide us a, uh, bringing us an excellent budget this year. Uh, appreciate that. This is the second, second year in a row that we're getting the modest budget. That means that we're not gonna use any surplus to balance the budget. This is a huge step in the right direction, and that's gonna help us to attract more businesses to Tarpon Springs, so we'll be more compatible. In, in the long run, we're actually going to, uh, increase our city revenue. We see some good numbers that the, the property values have been increased by 7.5%. Last year was 6.64, which looks like the economy's getting better. With that, we had $588,000 increase. Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Herrick, uh, I haven't seen any revenue coming from, uh, hotel tax, the bed tax. Is the reason why, or why we don't take advantage of that?
That is not a tax we receive. The county receives that, and then they can disperse it, from what I understand, but you have to apply for that money from the county if you have certain projects that you wanna use it for. But we do not get directly any bed tax money.
Okay, so we need to apply for it?
The county gets that.
Okay, we need to apply from the county to get some of that?
Yes, for whatever, if you have a project you wanna do, and economically, and you have to get it from them and apply for it. I'm not sure if there's a, what sort of list there is, or how to, how they prioritize it, but the county gets the money.
I guess, Mr. LaCouris, there's something we'll need to look into it, then, huh? Thank you. On, on Slide Number Two, uh, it shows the, uh, the, the five large funds that we have. Is it a reason why we're calculating it for 90% instead of 100?
Sorry, just trying to get back there. Why it's not 100%?
Yeah, why we're calculating 90% instead of 100?
Oh, there's some other funds out there. There's a Golf Course Fund at like 1.2 million. There's a Risk Management Fund on a little over a million. There's a Fleet Fund. Those are not included in there. We're just trying to show the five largest individual funds.
Okay, thank you. Slide Number Five, it shows the two new positions that we, uh, that we have budgeted. One for the Fire Department and one for Planning.
Yes.
Okay. Seven years ago, Mr. LaCouris remembers that very well. We saw the need that we need to have an Economic Development, uh, Manager, and we hired Ms. Lemons. And it, and it's, it's been very, very good for our city. It served our city very well. Uh, just recently, we completed the Economic Impact Study for Marine-related Businesses and Tourism. It showed the marketing position is very important to have in the city. I think it's gonna help our economy. Uh, Mr. LaCouris, if we look into that, I, I don't know if there's gonna look for a part-time or a full-time to work with Mrs., uh, Lemons to improve our, uh, actually, it's going to help, help us to, uh, promote the city in a marketing way.
The biggest thing that's gonna help her is that Planning Position to start with. We had talked about, and I know it'd been brought up before, that type position. Again, um, when we're dealing with positions in the Budget, we had to work on some priorities, and it probably, um, came down to this Planning Position or that Position. This Planning Position is more important. We can look later, but again, remember in future budgets, we have to be real careful of what we add, because we're coming up in two years to the homestead issue. And right now, I think this Planning Position, plus a hiring in, um, Diane Woods Department that may be able to assist, um, her some, I think we need to look and evaluate that first before we go into, you saw the, the list of things we have to add to the Budget. Um, you're talking about another chunk of money to do that, so, um, just remember, that's why we had that list. It'd have to be something added to there and see, you know, what would be most effective to do. It wa, it was our thought that adding that Planning Position for, for helping those people, we wanna try to get in here. It was, it was our thought that adding that planning position for, for helping those people who want to try to get in here economically would be more advantageous than hiring that marketing position.
Well, I agree with you that planning and zoning is very important, but also marketing is very important as well because that's going to bring businesses to Tarpon Springs. And eventually it's going to increase the, the city's revenue. So I, I will appreciate if we take a look and see and keep that in mind, the first opportunity to, uh, to look at that. Also like to, uh, uh, the salaries. I support your recommendations and the salary increases as well as the classifications that you present us. I think is very, uh, very nicely to, uh, to help out the, uh, the low wages employees and bring them up to a point that they can have a decent living. And we need to work on that even further in in the future. That will bring our city to be more compatible with the surrounding cities. Uh, it's not going to, actually is going to be more economical if we pay the, uh, the employees better and keep them here instead of keep training them. So, uh, yes, thank you for reorganizing the, uh, the departments and streamlining new process. Thank you very much. And now I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Banther.
Oh, yes, thank you. First, I want to thank our city manager, staff and the budget committee that that that's here tonight. And this is my fifth year, I believe, on this board doing this. You all make my job very easy each year. Uh, even the first few years when things were a little bit difficult, um, you all presented the, um, the, the, uh, very best budget that you could. And it has made our job appear very, very, uh, easy. I want to also thank Ron Herring for his quarterly budget updates, that that has helped us keep abreast of of what's going on all, 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 all year round. And I know, I know I think also helped with, uh, the input from this board, not just on a workshop basis once a year, but on a quarterly basis. So I'm very, uh, thank, thank, thankful for that as well. Um, I'm glad to see the increase in revenue that we have from the, from the property taxes and all the efforts that the city has done through, through Karen Lemons and, uh, and, uh, other staff, you know, you know, members. Because I, I said a, a, a few years ago that we're not gonna save our way out of, out of, out of, out of, out of our problem of using reserves to balance the budget. We're, we're gonna have to grow and then that, and and that's, that, that's what we, we, we've, we've, uh, we've done here. So, um, that's, that's very impressive. Also, just a side note that I, I always give, um, you know, um, when the press covers our mileage rate or anything like, like that, you have to keep in mind that we're a full-service city. That, um, you know, you, you, you can't compare our, our mileage rate with a city that only offers half the services that that we do. Here you, here you get everything that that you pay for. And I would hope that residents, uh, you know, keep, uh, you know, uh, you know, keep that in mind when they have the, uh, homestead exemption, um, on the ballot next fall. Because that has a large potential to hurt our budget. Um, I'll go to the questions that I've already addressed with the city manager, but just, I confirm that, um, with the two new positions for, for the fire department, the deputy chief and the fire, and the firefighter, um, position, that actually creates, you said, that triple down to firefighter positions beneath the chief.
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, it's disappointing that we did not get the safer grant, but you know, you kind of primed us for that since that surrounding communities were a, a, a little more in need.
And I really think we got a lot better opportunity to get those second two that we talked about when we apply for the next round, I think. And of course, that'll help us greatly with the seventy-five, where the funding is for three years. That will really help ease if we get hit with that homestead, be able to get those last two to apply next year. So hopefully we'll have a better chance, but I kind of knew with some of the problems of surrounding agencies. So that's our hope again. We will apply soon as it comes out again and, uh, hopefully get those positions next year or, you know, we'll find a way to budget for them.
And leading, that leads into my, my next point as well about the extra police, police position that I, I'm in full support of, whether we have to use reserves or one of your other budget free items to, to, to cover that. I think when residents think of what they pay their taxes for, I think first responders, police and fire is up there with number one. So I think it's important that as we grow as a city, we're looking at our police and fire departments and making sure that they are well-equipped and they have the manpower to respond. But because that's what our citizens pay for. I, you know, I beat the dead horse of going out to bid for, for health insurance. Uh, I, I, I hear your reasons why you're reluctant to, but, but, but for the record, I'll stay, I still would like us to just for at least an academic study. And then to keep our current vendor on, 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 on their toes. Um, I appreciate you putting the old city hall of renovations or exterior renovations, I, I should say, on the, uh, on this year's budget. That's a blight on, in the, in the, in, in the downtown area and it really needs to be, um, better utilized. So after, um, we do do those renovations, I think we as a board needed to discuss a better use of that building, not changing what it's used for, but using it more. I thought, you know, I was telling Mark, you know, I think since being elected, I'd been in there once to get tickets when my brother had his concert here. And that's on me, but you know, we should have a better use of that building, more, more, more in the public, more open for rentals. So I think as we improve the outside of it, um, we should, um, ha, 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 had, 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 though, though, had, though, though, had that talk as a board of, of how we can improve that.
And just, just a note on that, that we are almost complete with what we need to do to the building to go out to bid. So it's not something that's gonna happen, you know, during the end of the year. This should happen right at the first of this budget year because we've already had the scope out and we'll be ready to have a bid go forward and actually get started on that right away. So that's gonna be a project you'll be seeing right earliest in the budget year.
And, you know, and to that point, you know, we asked merchants downtown through our wonderful CRA grant program to improve their facades. And yet our, 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 our own facade looks horrible. So this, I think, just helps further the look of downtown. So I'm very thankful that you put that in this budget. Um, I support the new city planning position. I think it is evident that Heather is bogged down. I don't think that takes a rocket scientist. And I think also with the growth that, that we're experiencing, we have to have the, uh, two, uh, the two, uh, you know, full-time planners in there. I think our residents and developers that build here, um, you know, uh, kind of, kind of expect that. A few little things, um, just to confirm, uh, Ron, um, when you say for the new deputy chief position, hopefully I'm saying this right. The, um, we're getting from the county an additional EMS funding, twenty-five percent beyond what we usually get? So it's, it's actually extra, not the usual extra?
Yes, part of the EMS contract, the county has been funding seventy-five percent of the coordinator. Now, for the two thousand eighteen, they're gonna pay a hundred percent.
Excellent, that's good.
Yeah.
Very good, okay. Um, Mark, I assume if we are granted the, um, the grant for the spoil site for the dredge from the state, um, will that three hundred thousand dollars in the budget right now just go back into the, into, into, into the penny fund?
Yeah, for, for other projects, yeah.
Okay, and I can't stress how crucial that is. And also with the penny vote coming up, I, I would encourage residents to vote for that. You can see by our, by our budget how heavily we depend upon that. And if that went away, I, you know, I don't know what we do frankly, so.
Until, to your point, the, the reason why the word got out that the, the, the cultural center might be cut back is we just didn't have, because we had to put that money in case we didn't get that three hundred thousand in. We are real close. If you see at the bottom line, we're real close on that budget. So obviously projects had to get bumped. So hopefully, we anticipate, we got a great, great, um, project in for the grant. I fully expect us to get it. And if we do, then those projects we've cut from the penny thing, we can institute what money's left to do it. But we needed to just keep it going until we get that.
We get that grant, Bob Robertson's gonna also be our grant coordinator from now on, so, that's a job he's gonna take on. Um, I'm in full support of the pay increases for our, our, you know, I call it the civilian staff in city hall. I know even on, on, in my days in the budget advisory committee, we have discussed that. And I knew we were not competitive with surrounding cities. And the mayor made a very good point that it does cost us much more to have to lose an employee and train a new one, et cetera. So I'm, I'm, I'm very glad to see that we, we have that built in there and that hopefully that, that we're gonna be able to, um, uh, you know, have better retention of our civilian staff in city hall. Was there anything else that I talked about the homestead exemption? I do approve, you know, I don't know if you need our approval per se, but I guess you do, the increase in pay for the city clerk and your two point five percent. I, I think you've earned that with how you presented this, this budget to us. And, um, that's, oh, 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 one, one, one more thing. I can't talk about fire more. Uh, sixty-nine and seventy, I know you, 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 you already had done improvements already with painting and especially out at seventy, which is, you know, obviously needs a lot of repair. So I assume you said you're gonna try and continue those even though they're not?
The rest of that money that we didn't get, I thought we got out of what we saved this, that's where you see on there on that list that we're hoping for what we're gonna save this year, that that'll finish those out. So that's why that's on that list of anticipated that we think we're gonna be able to do with the savings that we have.
Well, I've already heard positive feedback from people of how it looks inside. So it's doing a great job. And hopefully I won't be on the board then, but, uh, we can, you know, what we did at seventy-one, we, we can do for seventy. I think that building is about, about reached its, its tenure and the money we should invest in it. So, but that's obviously down the road. Uh, thank you very much and thank you kind of staff and the advisory committee for, for all your work and again, for making our job a lot more easier. Thank you.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes, uh, yes, I want to thank all the department heads and, and everyone who worked so hard on this budget. We, we definitely appreciate it. Uh, I appreciated it when I was on the budget advisory committee because, uh, it really made me understand things better too. So, um, thank you all very much. Uh, and thank you to the budget advisory committee for all you do. Um, I agree with most of what, uh, Vice Mayor Banther said, um, and you answered some of my questions actually already. Um, I appreciate these regrade positions. Um, our executive office coordinator, I think, is in need of, of that regrade. So I, I, that's, that's very important, plus some of these other positions that, that you listed here for regrading and, and pay increases. Uh, I do support the, the new positions, of course, of the, for the fire department and, uh, the planning department. I know that Heather, I don't see her, she must be around the corner, definitely needs some help. Um, and I have to say that I agree with what the mayor said. I actually get asked by county commissioners why we don't attend the county economic development meetings or the county tourist development meetings, why Tarpon isn't present. Um, I know that most other cities around us, I just got a call this morning from Deb Polly, who's a marketing specialist in Osmar, uh, why we don't have a marketing position. And I really do feel that in order to take advantage of the bed tax and, and, and go out there and, and present ourselves to the county and take advantage of funding that's out there, uh, that we're probably not, uh, not going after, uh, that we do need somebody to, to help in marketing. Um, I would like to, to look at, and I've, I've talked to you about this before, um, someone under Karen to, to help Karen because I know she can't do it all. Uh, and she's been working a lot in planning, so I know the new planning position's gonna definitely help. But, uh, do feel that we need to look further into, uh, hiring someone either part-time or even the person in the cultural, uh, marketing position. If they can work on city marketing as well, not just cultural arts. Um, somehow we need to, to do a better job, I feel, at marketing, um, especially for our businesses who pay a lot of taxes to be here and, and need some help. Um, so I, I agree with the mayor on that. Most of my questions have been answered. I guess that's about it. But I do approve all of these, um, pay raises and, and these positions and would stress that we check at doing something for marketing.
Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Um, first, I want to thank all the staff that's here this evening, the department heads, that you guys do an amazing job for us. And bring in such a great budget to us. It, I know how dif- difficult it is, you know, you're always doing more with less and, um, we do appreciate everything you do. And, um, the budget advisory boards, since they've come around, uh, it does make our life easier, at least it makes my life a lot easier. That this extra pair of eyes, um, what, what you all do for the city and for, you know, all of us here is, is greatly appreciated. Mr. Herring does an awesome job and I want to thank you for, um, for putting this together for me today. Because I, I had some concerns about all the vacant positions that were in the budget. And I was like, I, in years past, I remember we would, if there was a vacant position, we slashed it. You know, why we hold it, why are we holding these, you know, this is money we could use elsewhere. But, um, it's changed since we originally got our, our, um, book in June to, to now. And, um, most of the positions have been filled or you're actively seeking, um, you've got, taking applications. And so, uh, uh, thank you for that because I, like I said, I was really concerned. I was like, Mark, what's going on here? So I appreciate that. And, um, uh, I, it's nice to see that we can, uh, offer our city employees, um, increases in their salary, if not just an increase, um, a whole pay grade higher. Because we are low man on the totem pole when it comes to other cities. And, um, and everybody works so hard and they're do, some of them are doing double duty, a lot of you are. And I know through the years that that's what's, what's happened here and, um, like we're doing more with less. So I'm happy and I, and I definitely approve, um, the budget, the, um, salary increases. I think that's a great idea and we, and we fit it in the budget, let's do it now. Um, because like, you know, this is family and they work very hard for us. I had a question about the trolley, but you answered that. I didn't realize we're going to seven day, seven day, so our increase. So we do have a little increase in the trolley service.
Yeah, only two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's not bad, but I was kind of wondering why it went up, but now that, I mean, that's great. Um, when it comes to the, the fire department, um, so we have two positions, right?
Right.
So we have, we'll have the, is it the deputy chief that goes to chief? I get all these positions.
Yeah, you got.
So then we'll have a new, do, a new deputy chief and then a firefighter, paramedic.
Somebody, well, somebody, remember, and somebody will replace him as deputy chief.
Right.
And then somebody has, they'll probably come from lieutenant, someone's gotta move up and you get down, you end up with the bottom hiring a paramedic after you go through those changes.
So, I mean, are we losing positions by moving these people up? Like, because I know deputy chief doesn't ride in a truck, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
You're not out there putting out fires, okay.
No, it adds a position because it is a position at the top, but then the dominoes hit of what you gotta promote and then you end up hiring from the bottom. So it's adding a position and you're not losing one from below to fill that position.
Okay, so, okay, because I, what I'm being told it takes three, three firefighters per shift to make like a whole, a, a truck, right? Okay, so we'll, we'll get there maybe.
Yeah, what we identified last year or, or even the year before, we had talked about what we needed for the next three or four years. It was gonna be two police officers. We fulfilled one of those. We still got one out there. It's the one you see here. And we talked about the need for four firefighters and it was always the three to make up the shifts. And then we knew about the needing the, with all the EMS stuff coming for us, we needed an administrative deputy chief to do that kind of stuff. We applied for all four of those in the safer grant, but we made sure we had the money that we could at least do two of them this year. And then with the hopes that we could get the help with the safer grant next year. But again, my plans are to do the same thing, put in for the safer grant because always budget. So by the end of next year, we'll be a year ahead. When we're talking about a three-year plan, we'd actually be a year ahead of putting those four on and doing what we said we needed to do within the next three or four years. And then depending what happens to the police, if we add that position, then we fulfill that. And again, by next year, we'll have the fire filled one way or another, hopefully with a safer grant. So we get a chunk of it paid for three years and that helps us. But if not, we have to, we're gonna have to budget for it and we'll have to find the money. Again, even if we may have to go into reserve to get it, we'll have, we'll need to fund it that year. But again, I'm hoping we can get that safer grant for the two instead of asking for four, that's always, but.
So they're in, um, they're, they're in contact, contract negotiations right now. So do you anticipate?
Police and fire.
Police and fire, okay, I didn't know the police was as well. I know the fire were, okay. So when do we anticipate their final?
Um, hopefully they get it set so we can put it on the last commission meeting of September to approve and, and get them set when the new salary raises come up. So we're gearing for, to be able to bring those to you the last meeting of September. We hope they cooperate and we can get to that point, so.
So there's a.
But we're on course.
Okay, so there's a safer grant for the fire department. What about, are there any grants available for the police department?
Yeah, we actually have got a lot of positions in the past for, and we put in, we put in for one of those positions, um, and, and didn't get it for the police. The police are a lot harder because they're real, they've, they've gone from being more community policing police. They've gotten, they've, they've gotten real harder to get in competitive. So, um, the chief and looking, we put in for the one last year, didn't get it and looking at the criteria, um, we didn't think we had a chance to get it this year. If one comes available, but I don't see that hap, the way they've tightened up those, those grants for police, I don't, I don't see much of a slim and none chance of getting those. So that's why I resolved that we're probably gonna have to fund that last position. Because I don't think there's much chance of getting a grant.
Whatever we have to do, I mean, you know, first responders are very important in our community. When it comes to Heather, she works so hard. She really does. And I know she needs help. So, and I see that, are we actively, um, interviewing for the other position?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know she.
And hopefully from that pool, we'll be able to fill both those positions with that pool we're, we're interviewing. That is our hope. That's why we're asking for the fifteenth, because hopefully shortly after the fifteenth, we can put both those positions on and get them working.
Because I think, I feel like if she does get the help, you know, that she needs, it could lighten the load for Ms. Lemons. Because, you know, like, like we do, she, Ms. Lemmons. because, you know, like, like we do, she, Ms. Lemmons is stretched. She, she's, when I say do more with less and double duty, she's a great example of that. And, um, you know, and somebody could help with marketing. There was a board that we used to go to years ago, George Beliris would go to.
That's the tourist.
The tourist, yes. And so, so nobody from here is attending that, those meetings anymore. And those are really important. Um, I used to go, it was back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and then, then Mark started going. But if we could have some, some sort of, um, representation from our city, we could find out where there's money available. And, you know, give us.
That's what the marketing specialist supposed to be doing.
Yeah. Yeah, our marketing spec, because we need, we need somebody, um, to start attending those meetings and, and, and if we don't have a marketing specialist, if, when Heather gets help, maybe alleviate some work from Karen, then maybe she could attend those meetings, I'm not sure, but.
Yes.
We need to, we really need to start.
I take full blame for Karen and the time she was there, but she has saved me and this organization tremendously by having the ability to step. And when, when you have nowhere to go, yeah, you don't want to use Karen because it takes away from her stuff. But she's a godsend to have because she has saved our butt, um, by coming in and doing that stuff. And hopefully when we get this in place, then we can almost exclusively have her go back to what she, and then you'll see a change in a lot of those things. And again, uh, Diane Wood made a great hire at her place for marketing and stuff. And I think, I think she and looking at her background when we hired her, that is gonna be an asset to immediately maybe use to assist Karen, uh, to do that. And again, if, if we're able to get those planners hired pretty early and stuff, we can, we can hit the ground running on, on, you know, putting everything you're saying into, into effect.
When it comes to the cultural center, the, the repairs you're talking about, the outside, it's the same that we did out here with, I forget what we called it, but, so it'll be the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be nice, we, does need a little lo- love and tender care there. But, um, I, I know back, and like again, years ago, there used to be, um, would draw crowds to the center. Different artists would have their showings and stuff like that upstairs and it would bring a lot of people in. Um, I don't, we don't do that anymore, do we?
Well, we, we do, but we're, we're gonna have, we're gonna, we're gonna probably October-ish or so, the beginning, October, November-ish, we're gonna put an agenda item together. We, we should be out to bid or ready to go with that. And we want to talk as a group with the commission about what we use the building for and what possibly we can use for in the future. So that's gonna be an upcoming agenda item, uh, on your agenda, um, requested by Commissioner Banther. So we, we will be talking about that.
Um, I just wanted to quick on the, um, golf course. I've mentioned before with the penny, penny money, if we can somehow, or I don't think there's room in the budget, but somehow look at expanding and redoing the, uh, coffee shop, what, the, yeah. And just have maybe do lunches again and breakfast and stuff like that. I think that could really generate some more, some business for, for the golf course and generate some income for us. I would hope to see that soon.
Well, again, and we got the great ability to do that and other things if that penny passes. Not that we have to wait for two thousand twenty and do that, but obviously it doesn't pass. We got a whole bunch of stuff to squeeze in the last two years. So once we know that's available and stuff, we can really look at two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Because as you see, we've kind of left those last couple of years of the penny open. We really haven't filled it with much because we want to make sure it's gonna extend. Because otherwise you all have to take a lot of projects and put into what the last two years of the penny will do. Again, I think it, you know, I think the people realize and will realize by the end what the penny's done. But we'll have a lot better, um, feel and you'll be able, we'll be talking right after that November vote, vote about, okay, now we can really look. And what are those things in the penny, do we want to do in the last two years of this penny? What do we want to do at the beginning of two thousand? And we can look, and of course, that's, that's one of the things on the list. So after November, hopefully we can really get into the timing of when we do that project and other probably projects. When we know we've got those five years to be looking at.
And one other thing with this, that the passenger bus with the wheelchair lift, that would be utilized more for, um, the recreation department, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and which I really would see a need for, especially with, um, the music on the beach and that we're transporting so many people right now from like the high school out to the beach. Uh, maybe, I don't know if we could help with the, with the senior center or not, but, um, I think that's something, can we get?
That's one of the things, we want to look at some grants and maybe that's something we may be able to work, you know, work on to do for that.
I think that would be, that, and the neck, and then the next of, of course, is, um, cleaning up the rec center a little bit. He's a little.
We, we.
T L C.
We, we, we still got, we still got money in the budget to do it. Again, our, our in-house staff is rather overwhelmed right now finishing up some product, but we do have still some budget and money that we're using for their, uh, continuing. It's just.
And that's, and that's where we're really fortunate is that we have in-house people that are, are doing so much more of the work these days than us going out to bid on everything. And, um, so I don't know if that makes us short-staffed or not, uh, that would fall into what, Tom? Function? Where's Tom? Oh, there he is. You know, if, if he, he needs more staff, I'm not sure, I didn't get a chance to talk to Tom. But, um, something we need to think about because if we can start saving more money and doing more in-house, but again, we don't want to stretch everybody so thin. So again, I want to, I want to thank everybody again for, um, for all their hard work and everything you do for us. Thank you.
I just had.
In car.
I just had an additional comment I wanted to make. Talking about the penny fund, we definitely all need to vote for that. But I noticed, uh, I'm always looking at the marina, uh, and I noticed how much more income we're making there. So the improvements, you know, are definitely gonna help, but over the last few years.
Talking about the enterprise.
Okay, no, I just wanted to say because of the penny fund, we're making these improvements. But, um, as far as the fire department, uh, those of us who've done the fire ops and, and have, have been out there, uh, realized the need for more firefighters, obviously, and, and from what I've been told, uh, to be in compliance nationally, you need four on a truck. Uh, and we now have three, so it seems like we have a ways to go to, to actually be nationally compliant with what's, not what we have here locally. But, uh, we're, I know it's a long way to, to get there.
We can talk about that, we're not so far off as people tell you we are, but we can have a conversation about that.
Okay, so hopefully we'll get the grants and, and what we need to, to eventually get there. Because, uh, of course, we support our fire department. Thanks.
Uh, I think most of you guys know I've only been here in this position for a couple of months, so this is all hugely new to me. Uh, thank you to the whole city staff for everything you've done and Ron, um, putting us all together. Uh, I'm gonna have more questions, I think, than everybody else, so if you could bear with me on this. Uh, I do support the, the salary increases and, um, I know our city's staff members, uh, go above and beyond. And thank you all very much for everything you do because, uh, we really couldn't be this great city without you all. So I appreciate everything you do. And I hope this is just, uh, one way to show our appreciation, um, for your, your job. And I, we know you don't work for free, so. Mark, what, what's the increase has been in the past? Is it something that they've been frozen in the past or are they typically increases every year?
No, it, it's, it's looked pretty much like this.
Okay.
I think when we started doing those incremental, um, salaries, we, we even started off the first year at six percent for lower ones, just because they were so low. But mainly they've looked exactly like, like this, a graduated scale or a little more for the lowest paid ones. A bulk of the employees in the middle, which has always been around three point five, four, three in that area, and then a little lesser down there. So it's, it's pretty much, the commission last three years have seen figures pretty much the same as this.
Okay. I would just like to point out, um, with addition of additional, uh, positions, if we have another recession-type situation, let's say in ten years from the route we're going, with salary increases year over year and adding additional positions, I, I just want to cautious, make caution to say, uh, we have to be careful in how many staff members we're adding because it, it's important to give everyone increases due to the, a cost that's going up just to live in Pinellas County is absurd. But we're also gonna be missing out on, I mean, you look at, what was the total increase this year for the salaries increases, uh, Ron?
Total ci- city about six hundred and thirty thousand, that includes benefits.
Okay, so let's say ten years, it's six million dollars, um, and over the ten years it gets to. So I, I don't want to be, I don't want to sound like I'm a bad news type guy, but we just have to be careful how many positions we're actually adding, um, with that, because it could put us in a precarious situation about ten years from now where we had to cut a lot of our services due to salaries, um, which are very important for our employees here in the city. Now, I want to touch on also the, the positions that are being added, um, with the fire department and also discuss about the marketing individual. I'll start off with the marketing position. I, I think I agree with you, Mark, and how you're, we discussed, um, there's actually two people that would be coming in to helping Heather. Um, and then Bob also was added as a project manager to take some load off your plate. So I think it is a good idea to see how much time, um, Karen has to do some of these other projects where she's not being pulled to the planning department, helping Mark out, and then Bob also helping out with the project management. Um, I, I think that's prudent on our end, um, although I do feel marketing is an important part. But I would be curious to see how many other cities have an economic developer on staff and a marketing person as well. But I, I think it's an important aspect that, to have marketing, but I think it's prudent to evaluate where we're at after we get these other positions filled, um, moving forward. I, I want to understand more on the fire department, um, situation, uh, with the deputy, the deputy chief. Because the way it sounded is, it sounded like it was gonna be two positions that are actually gonna be filled on the bottom, but it, I think it's actually only gonna be one position. Am I wrong with that?
No, it's two posi, at the bottom end, when you end up with the promotions.
Right, so it's actually a vacancy due to a promotion.
Yeah.
So it's not actually a new position, it's only one new position.
Right.
Uh, I'm not in favor of another deputy chief right now. So, um, I think it's based on having an act, additional people down at the bottom on the street is more important right now. How many deputy chiefs do we currently have today?
One.
Just one. What about district chiefs?
Three.
Okay, so it would be two deputy chiefs, a chief, and then three district chiefs, correct?
And again, I can have them address the, the biggest need is because of what we have to take over as far as the EMS processing. That is a predominant, what they're gonna do, Scott, you want to come up and?
Rick Butcher, fire chief, Scott Young, deputy fire chief, for another four or five weeks. The things that have occurred recently with EMS in Pinellas County is we used to do our CMEs, which is continuing medical education, to maintain your certifications for your paramedic and your EMT license. That was all done at the county level. We would send our crews to a central training center and they would attend monthly training sessions to do that. Well, the county has removed that process and put it on each individual department to provide their own training. And that's why they bumped up the money for the emergency, uh, the EMS coordinator. The extra money is because they hit, there's so much extra work to do.
Okay, um, is there like a co-op we could look at amongst the county, like with other departments instead of, because to add a position that's a hundred and sixty thousand and to add another truck that's fifty thousand, so is that?
The, this position is also, we're gonna, a- as, as Commissioner Kikka said, there's gonna be many hats in that position as well. But to answer your first question, we're pretty much going to where the other departments in the county are. We're kind of lagging in that. The majority of the counties or majority of the county fire departments, the EMS coordinator is administrative, is a forty-hour person. They have to be on hand every day to handle day-to-day things. And so we're just putting ourselves in line with that. Also to note that individual also be taking over the city's safety process, which is a, which is a rather big deal, huh? Mr. Of course, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, but that does benefit the city in, in cost savings and things like that as well.
So again, that's, we, we knew when we talked about needing the four people in the budget, we knew we were gonna need that one, that one high position to do all these things and we needed the three people below, um, to, one per shift. The necessity of having that position first is this EMS and this training going on. So that's why in the order, and again, when we put in for the grant next year for the two additional positions, I think it leaves us better in the grant to put those two paramedic-type positions into that grant, um, instead of having an administrator and that. And, and again, that's a need for this EMS that we have to realize now. So that's why you see the order of those two. Plus, the advantage of doing that is we create three other promotions for people who have been here, um, in other positions. We'll, we'll create three other promotions, uh, within the department, which is, which is huge. So that, that's, that's the thinking of why we had to do it and why we did it that way.
So why can't they, how come it can't be shared amongst the chief, deputy chief, and then the fire, um, I'm sorry, misspeaking. The district chiefs with that role, with the EMS training and so on, so.
Currently, the, one of the district chiefs does that, but he isn't able to do the job of the district chief because he's so busy doing the EMS stuff. So that duty gets taken away on the district chief's side by running the operations of the shift. He's also coming in almost daily on his own time to catch up on the EMS stuff. So it's becoming too overwhelming. So with the extra twenty-five percent the county's providing us, it almost, you know, makes us have to bring somebody in to do this full-time. It, it's, it's, it would put us in line with most of the departments in the county that already have a full-time EMS chief doing this job. The district chief is there to run the, uh, the shift that day, the three stations, to make sure everybody's doing what they have to be certain places. He's there to run any major incidents in the scene, in the city right now. But when he's tied up all the time doing EMS, he can't do that function in the way it's designed to.
What about, I mean, how come we're not looking at adding another district chief instead of adding a de- a deputy chief due to the additional cost that the city sees with the salary? Has that been discussed? Because I think that would have been more of a approach that we may have wanted to look at as looking at adding another district chief versus deputy chief, um, with salaries.
That would have to do with the rank structure. The fire departments, as well as the police, are paramilitary organizations. There's ranks, each rank has their authority and the people that they over, that they're supervisors to. The EMS coordinator needs to be supervisor over the district chiefs, so they need to outrank the district chief.
But again, when you're doing that, you'd only talk about a minimal five percentage that would it even save you? Because, you know, it would be, it'll be minimal money what you decided to be. Really the best, as is police department, um, underneath a chief, one person who's mostly an operational, one's an administrative one. That chain, that's the chain I worked under in the police, what he works under, and that's what he kind of created in the fire. And to me, that's the best, that's the best organization.
It does mirror, our, our org chart will mirror, uh, police org chart, what, they have the two majors and our, ours are two deputy chiefs. So it's, it's similar to their organizational chart.
Mark, what's the staff count for the police versus fire right now?
Ron, you got?
We have, uh, thirty-nine and two of those are civilians.
And I believe we have fifty sworn officers in the police department.
Okay. The, the fire vehicle, is that gonna be for this deputy chief as well?
No, the vehicle that, we have two vehicles listed. Uh, the one, we're actually a year behind on the fire engine. We have a, a continuing program to replace the fire engines. Fire engines are frontline for ten years, backup for five years, and then they cycle out and they're replaced just because of the wear and tear on the fire engine. Believe me, you do not want to be, have to go on a call and have a fire engine not start, that's a bad thing.
Yeah.
The, the vehicle that you see is actually replacing an old Explorer or something that the fire marshal drives. We will use a fleet vehicle that we have now as a backup for the, for the new deputy chief position.
Okay. This is the only fire questions I believe I had. Thank you. No, that's not it. With, um, I saw the historic district study, I'm not sure he would speak on that, but my question would be, is there, um, funds put in to look at redesigning or reviewing the guidelines for the historic preservation board?
What the H B B's been asking me to do for the last several years and.
So that's what that is?
Yes.
Okay, great. Water plant. Water plant improvements, I'm not sure if, uh.
Commissioner, we're going to cover that with the CIP.
Okay. Even though that was, we talked about with what Ron discussed in the budget, did you know the six hundred and seven thousand?
If you want to talk about it, go ahead.
Um, Bob Robertson.
Part of the CIP.
It was nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. But I mean, I could wait if you wanted me to talk about it later.
It was in the presentation you thought about the well explained to him.
If, if you could just kind of clarify for me, I mean, I know the water plant's a new water plant, so, um, just trying to grasp. Why there's another million dollars in improvements and then we've got well fields improvements and.
In fact, that was a good question of the budget advisory board today that we talked about. Um, and we had talked about the water supply well fields are ones we have now. Bob will talk to you now about the need, what we have there for the additional wells to make. We, we've had a goal and we progressively use them, but why we need additional wells and that's the predominance of that, of that in the water plant improvements. You want to talk about the additional wells and why we need them, which is the nine hundred, a lot, a lot of it, not all of it, but a good portion of the nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I'm Bob Robertson, uh, Project Administration Department Director, pinshining for Paul Smith, Public Services Director. So the question about the water plant improvements is just as Mark said, we have seventeen wells that, uh, feed the RO plant now. And we have a permit for up to twenty-two. And it's always been our plan to add more wells incrementally. Um, one thing we discovered this year during this unprecedented drought was that we were tapping every well full speed, um, pretty close to it. So we really, um, this, we already had it in the plan to add more wells. This, this year we're looking at adding three more, uh, to help us balance out our, our need. That's primarily the, the bulk of the money there.
Was that, um, now with the bonds, with the building, the, uh, water plant, was that? Looked into that at all with the wells initially to build the plant? Or is this something that we're anticipating that is going to be a general budget, um, cost? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
I think what you're asking is should, did we think about it when we first built the plant and was included in the original bond issue? We did think about that, but we were trying to build to need. And that's exactly what we did. And this was planned as a, as a future CIP, so we weren't hitting the, uh, the big capital part early on. If we could spread it out and maybe we discovered we didn't need as many wells, we could have pushed this off for multiple years. But it, uh, it turns out we, we need them sooner.
Okay, thanks. While you're here, can you touch base on the, um, meter repair and change outs? It's about two hundred and twenty-six thousand. Just to understand, um, so I have understanding, is this something that we do on an annual basis to where we go out and update the meters for residents or is it, um, something different?
That's basically it and, and it's changing out the older analog meters to digital meters at a radio read, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Commissioner Carr, we're going to be talking about these on, during the, uh, CIP section.
Okay. Well, I'll just.
If you want to hold on to that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Um, Mark, I've got a question about a rock, the rock wall. Um, that's in the proposed, uh. Budget items that are unfunded. Yeah, I know. I would, I would caution the city about adding something like that. I think it's a neat thing to have and it's fun. But the liability to have someone to run up the rock wall without having a harness or something along the lines of supervision. Is, I think puts a city in a precarious situation again to where a young child or an adult can fall and then see the city for unsupervision. So I would not be in support of that, although I am complete supporter of our recreational growth in areas where we can grow.
Okay.
Um, the recycling bins, there was a recycling that was discussed in Ron's budget. Is this an okay time to talk about that? Like I said, I, I'm new to this, so, I mean, I mean, no one. I sat down with Ron and went over some of this stuff, but, um. I don't know where that would fall in the, the discussion.
That, that, go ahead, finish up that.
So I, I think we do have a, a pretty decent size amount of money in the recycling budget. Um, our recycling bins are pretty small and we've got a lot of, um, uh. More experienced citizens, uh, that live or older citizens in our city. I think at some point we should be looking at not the bins, but more of a something that rolls out because you can't really put a whole lot in those bins. Um, and more of the education that's gone out to the citizens in the area of more, um, understanding recycling. That is an area I think that the city should probably look at, um, to increasing the sizes and encouraging recycling more amongst the, um, the residents. Another question, it was about City Marina. Is that going to be later on, Mayor?
Well, that would be part of the, uh, enterprise one.
Okay, I'll hold off to that one.
If you look at the, uh, the agenda that was given to it.
Yeah, that was given us.
Yeah.
Like this, like right when I walked in, so it was different. So are we just under the salaries then?
Well, this is just make a comments on the presentation.
Okay. One of my questions would be about the presentation that had the property values increasing. For Mark and Ron. Why aren't we looking at decreasing the millage rate at all? Instead of. Maxing out all of our budget.
Well, we don't call it maxing out. We call it, uh, essential needs that are needed when, for instance, you're trying to. You know, add two hundred thousand dollars worth of fire positions and you're trying to do some things and stay competitive with salaries. You know, that's to us, of course, more important than, uh, than, uh, lowering the millage rate. Um, there's a lot of needs. There's an expectation of services and. If you'll look at that chart, put the chart up of the, of the, um, different. The graphs that you have, as you can see, if you look at that second graph, there, we're not even back to the taxable value that we were working with in two thousand eight. Um, you know, we're still, we're still ways away from there getting, getting back. So we are still in the recuperation stage and obviously it's the ability of this board to cut some of these things out of the budget to reduce the millage. And again, that, that's your decision to do. Ours is to provide what we think we need to provide the services in the city, um, that are needed. And, uh, so again, that's your, that yours is commissioned purview to talk about.
Okay. I've got a question about the wood chipper. Uh, why does the city want a wood chipper when we've got our, um, yard waste where we can just dump their yard waste?
You, you mean the cut wood chipper? Rock, that, um, Tom?
Good evening, Tom Punction. Uh, wood chipper is actually for efficiency. Uh, we take the tree down and you got constantly loading on the truck and then hauling it over there. It takes much more time. Uh, multiple trips, depends on the size of the tree, of course, but it actually cuts back on my labor costs quite a bit.
Okay, thanks.
But it got cut.
Yeah, what's in, if it's, we have other funding that comes in. I know you said there potentially.
No, that's, that was the first, that was the first slide. That second slide were the things that.
All right, I'll hold the rest of my questions for.
Thank you. Now I'd like to invite the Budget Advisory Committee Chairperson, Chairman, Mr. Saloo. If you give us your recommendations on behalf of the committee.
Thanks, Mayor. Roger Saloo, uh, nine six seven Bayshore. Uh, Chairman of the Budget Advisory Committee. Let me speak just a little bit about the process we've gone through as Jake and others have been asking the questions. For the last five meetings that the Budget Advisory Committee has held. We've had individual presentations from each of the department heads. In detail for what they are putting forward in their budget. Uh, and as everybody on the dais has already said, uh, I really want to thank, uh, the city employees. The presentations were excellent. Uh, they understood their business. And I've got special kudos for Ron. He did an outstanding job of putting the, the packages together, summarizing material for us. Making it easy for us to see what's going on. And frankly, he's done a great job on doing, uh, presentation of data that's out of the format that's typically seen, that's not very helpful to understand. Uh, the slides that he's put up and some of the sense that you get makes it much easier for us to see what's going on. Uh, and as you look at your budget books, you'll notice there were numbers that were available in June that talked about where we were. There's numbers now in August. We might say we haven't done our job because as you look at those numbers, they're all a bit larger than they were in June. Uh, if we've done our job, you would say they should be much smaller. I think one of the things that the Budget Advisory Committee has done, has looked at what's been asked for. Asked in areas where we think additional funds should be spent. Uh, clearly some of that was in the planning area. Uh, we've been involved as well in talking about, as you all recognize here, help is needed and that is now in the budget. Uh, the same is true as we look at the fire department and the headcount that they're working on. I'd say our conclusion of what you see in front of you is the budget is that we'd recommend that this is an outstanding budget. And one that we would recommend passage. We're comfortable with it. Uh, I don't think there are any dead bodies buried in here that you'll, if you look closely, you'll find, I don't think they're in there. Uh, I think it was well-prepared, well-presented. And one of the things that I think is very helpful for you guys. The city manager has put together, uh, if you were in business, you'd have a, uh, priority resource budgeting or some of the. Set words they use as to how to do it. What doesn't make the cut? And the city manager has, has prioritized along with the department heads, those things that didn't make the cut. He's given one page of those that were close to the cut, didn't make it. And those that are beyond that and probably shouldn't be in the list. But they're there and have been brought forward. Uh, and I think it makes a, a good matrix as you come forward with ideas that you might have to be added. It gives you a place to put them and say, okay, where does this stand relative to these that could be added? And there are a number of them. And you've talked about them, more heads to go into, uh, the economic development areas. Where would that sit? But it gives you a, a hierarchy to look and see where they can go. At this point, you have a balanced budget. Uh, we did take a vote and the recommendation coming forward, as you guys signed up for maintaining the millage rate, was to keep it where it is. Uh, we're in some unsettling times, both with what can happen with the penny. Uh, which is pretty critical to us. And what can happen as we get into expanding the homestead, which would be devastating to us. Rather than start down a path that we can't continue, which makes very little sense. Uh, to the taxpayer, it wouldn't represent much savings and then turn around and have to go back in the other direction. At this point, we're in a balance. I think it's appropriate. Uh, we've got adequate resourcing to withstand a problem. Hence the eight million dollars, give or take, that we've got in reserves. But the Budget Advisory said you've got a great budget prepared and we recommend its passage. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, Mr. Saloo, I want to thank you and I want to thank all the members of the Budget Advisory Committee. For working so hard with the staff to provide us a good budget this year, as you do in the past, as you've done in the past. Before we created the, uh, the Budget Advisory Committee, we spent hours during the work session to go line. Line, a line, a line item. And to analyzing each one of those and we spent hours and it was not productive at all. I think, uh, one night we spent over three, four hours doing just that and we probably saved not even fifteen thousand dollars. So by having the Budget Advisory Committee, you guys are, you're reviewing each line item. You are analyzing it and you're giving us a very good, uh, budget and I want to thank you for that. Also like to thank the staff for working with you so close and provide you the data that you need. And provide us this recommendation.
Thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would add one thing, and I think others in my committee will do this in future meetings with the commission. We need more members on the BAC. We've, we are, we now have an opening. Uh, and we would like to get, uh, additional support, uh, as alternates for the BAC. Anyone who's got suggestions, we're looking at, we think a wonderful, uh. Location for them. The city manager has brought this up as well. As you go through your education for the citizens, uh, training program. Looking for people in there who would like to find a way to get into detail of what goes on in the city. We could certainly use the help. We'd love to have, uh, some more people, fresh blood, as it were. I know a number of you folks sitting on the commission have, have come through being involved with the Budget Advisory Committee. It's a great way to understand the city and certainly know where the money comes from.
It's a great community.
Thank you, and thanks for setting it up, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, any comments on that?
Any, any questions?
Vice Mayor Penther wants to say something.
I'll just make one comment. Again, we know, I know, we, we've all thanked you and we'll continue to do that, but it, you know, it just, I, I can't stress the importance of, of this committee. Even, you know, while times are good right now and there's not really a question, but, um, the fact that we have a set of civilian eyes, if you will, non-elected officials that review the budget. For reasons that the mayor said, that we're not going line by line up here as you all do, because I sat on your, on your committee for two years. But the fact that we have those eyes looking at the budget does give me peace of mind. To know that, you know, I'm not going to miss something per se that you would, you all, you all would bring that up. So just thank you again, and I think that's a great idea that with the academy that starts on Wednesday, correct? That we can, um, uh, pull some more resources for you for the next budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to the general fund. Uh, any discussion on that? Commissioner Carr, we'll start with you.
I don't know if this is falling under capital or not, but, um, I think at some point the city should be looking at additional parking out for Sunset Beach. Uh, we could see the need with, uh. Uh, I know there's some open property out there. There's a need for definitely the upgraded boat ramp. There's not enough parking for the boats, uh, with, or the trailers and vehicles. And then also with our concert series that are out there too, there's really not adequate parking, which is good to see the shuttle running now from the high school and middle school. When they rotate it, but, um. At some point that, this, that really needs to be addressed, um, overall, I think. But I think I asked the majority of, uh, my other questions I had.
You have any questions?
Nothing. Commissioner Carr?
No, nothing.
I just forgot one more kudos, but also, um, looking forward to our IT department, and I know we have Suzanne here, um. When I started at least on the Budget Advisory Committee, which was. Seven or six years ago, we, we really didn't have an IT department. We had like, I think some other repair computers and that was it. And now, I mean, I think I would put us on par or ahead of Dunedin. You know, we're not, we can't really compare ourselves to Clearwater or St. Pete, but at least if you, you know, per capita, what, what do we have with live streaming our meetings? That, that's, you know, that sounds small, but that's huge for citizens that might want to hear one thing, but don't want to come sit here for, for two or three hours. Um, and I know the way, having my educational background in, um, in IT management, IT is not a standalone department. It, it is integral in customer support for the entire, uh, you know, organization. And I've heard nothing but, you know, positive things. I, you know, it's embarrassing how often I forget my password, my email, and Casey always helps me. I feel old now that I go in and have to, you know, have that done. I once had to do that. So, uh, just thank you again for all your advancements in that department. It's not, it, it's, it's critical now to everything that we do in the city. And I look for continued ways to use the IT department to improve citizen access to what we do. And I know just our, our website, live streaming, et cetera, it's all just gone leaps and bounds from, uh, five years ago. Thank you.
Well, I would like to echo what, um, Vice Mayor said. Suzanne's done an outstanding job since she's, she's come aboard. And I know I've come in on weekends and she's here roaming the halls. Scared me to death, but yeah. She's here and she's working and she works very hard and, and keeping us safe from. From the whole environment, this computer environment or this whatever, you know, there's so much that goes on and we didn't have anything years ago. We had no protection whatsoever, so we, we were wide open for some major disaster. So thank you for everything you do and, and your staff and, um. Uh, there was something I did want to hit on, um, with the Sunset Beach. I know now that we finally have some sort of a boat ramp out there, um, we do, we will need extra parking. So I, I believe you were working on that.
We are working on it, yes.
There's some extra parking and redesigning out there.
Yes, we are, we are looking at bringing that back to you.
And then not only because of that. And not only because of that, because of us being charged $5 to use Fred Howard Park, so...
Which is going to continue for another year.
Yes. And so, you know, our community beach here now is really being heavily utilized. Every time I go out there, it is jam-packed. And so whatever we can do just to keep it up, even if we could figure out, you know, when it rains, and there's just the dirt road, and every time it rains, there's nothing but potholes out there. So if we could do something to fix that.
Yeah, we're working on that all to bring back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Panther, I agree with you that IT department is doing an excellent job, but look, and all the other departments doing an excellent job. We're very fortunate. We got very good staff. We've got very good employees, and we are very thankful for the services they're providing to our citizenry in Tarpaulin Springs. As Commissioner Carr has mentioned that, and he wanted to see the possibility of reducing the millage, perhaps would be a good idea if we have another option and look and see if, if the numbers will work out to see if we can reduce the millage, even if it's just a little bit, like we talked about last year, reducing it from 4, 5.42 to 5.39. And even though it'll be just a little bit, probably, well, not probably, but I know for well that it's going to make us more compatible to other cities, and it will help us to attract businesses here to Tarpaulin Springs. And in the long run, it's going to be more beneficial to the city because that's going to increase the revenue by bringing more business here to Tarpaulin. And it's good for the, for the average resident here in Tarpaulin Springs. So let's just look and see if there's any option on the table and to be discussed. Perhaps the numbers will work, maybe not. If I have a, you know, if we have consensus on the board. Sure.
Mayor, I agree with you that we should every year examine the millage rate and see, you know, what our income is and where we stand. At least me personally, again, I'm open to any examination that you want to do or any study or, or review, but I'm opposed to any lowering of the millage rate for reasons that I stated, in the sense that we don't know what's coming with the homestead exemption. I'm pretty confident Penny will pass, but you don't know until it happens. If you look at the budget we have, we're just being balanced for the, for the, for the second year in a row. So I really think that we need all the money that we can to provide the services that our citizens expect. And I think when, when you look at, you know, if you're going to lower the millage rate, well, then what are we going to reduce? That was a famous question that was often asked on the Budget Advisory Committee. And some of it can be perception. I appreciate that. I realize we lowered it a very small amount, but I think that was a good nod to our citizens that the economy is improving and the city is, is getting more, 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 more funds. But I don't see where we can cut. I don't see where we'd make a drastic difference. And as far as being competitive, you know, like I've said before, you know, it's kind of my thing, this full-service city model. You know, our millage rate has to be compatible with that of a city, and the only one other in Penous County, if I'm wrong, correct me, is St. Petersburg, that is full-service city like we are, especially with our, with our water plant online now. So, you know, I don't, I think you have to pay for, for what you expect to receive. So I don't, I, you know, again, I'm open to any, any examination. I think that's a very healthy thing to do each year. We should be making sure that we're good stewards of what we're charging citizens to live here. But, you know, as far as, you know, we're still not back to where we were in the very beginning, until we reach that point, I would just be cautious for moving forward with any kind of lowering of the millage rate.
Would you be in favor, do you have an option on the table, look at it?
Well, yes, yes, like, 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 like I said, we should always review it. But I'm just stating my, you know, you know, I, there's areas that I'm, that I'm, that I'm at a deficit in, in my wheelhouse, definitely in this seat, but coming from an econ math background, budgeting's my thing, and then I don't see, unless I see something new where I would be in favor of lowering it, but I'm always willing to have that option. I think we should look at that every, every budget cycle. I'm just expressing to you and, and the rest of the board, my feelings on that.
Okay.
Just from a city manager aspect, what I need, you see what I say is not funding out of the police officer position and those things on the list. I got to know a direction for when I come back to you, am I looking to find money for those items, or am I looking to find money to reduce the millage? That's a vast difference. So you see the items there. So I think we really do need to come to the consensus because it's a difference of the way I'm going to approach it. Do I put aside the officer position, those things you need, that I'm trying to fund out of reserve and look for money to reduce the millage, or do I look to find money there? And I kind of need that direction tonight.
Mr. Licorice, you don't need to make any changes what you have planned to do. Just bring another option there, just in case. You have two different options, that's all.
No, I don't agree with you, Mayor.
Well, well, because if you want to, if you're talking about lowering the millage rate so much, then there's going to be a shortfall like there was last year, what, 400,000?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, so, so, you know, we'll be looking at the same shortfall. And we need to, we need to remember that we have to, we're a full-service city, so we do have to compare us to other full-service cities. So that's one thing, and that people forget about that. We also don't have as much industry in our city as, say, Oldsmar does, so, you know, they're bringing in more revenue than we are. So again, that falls back on marketing, economic development. So I would not support lowering the millage rate. I think we should leave it where it is at this point, and, you know, we've got a balanced budget right now, and there are some other things that we're looking to possibly add to the budget. And I just think we need to, you know, what would it save our, our taxpayers, or all of us, $4 a year or something like that?
Probably less.
Yeah, so, I don't, I don't know. I just, I wouldn't support it at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Silver.
I have to agree with my colleagues and, and Mr. Saloo. I think we have to be very cautious. We've only balanced our budget for the last two years. You never know what's going to happen, the homestead exemption, you know, the penny. I also think that we need to keep it where it is right now.
Okay.
Is this a consensus or question, or what is it?
Yeah.
Wherever there's an opportunity to have a residence pay less in taxes, I'm in favor of. In the situation we're in right now, with our current budget and the needs of, that have been proposed to us here, I would almost ask, I mean, if we're looking at reducing it, why not look at also increasing it if we're looking at it as an option? I mean, if we're needing to fill a police officer's position to increase the safety of our community, that's a pretty important aspect. As someone that pays taxes here in town, I would like to pay less, and I had people complain to me when I was door knocking throughout the city, that why are my, why are my taxes going up every year? I heard the millage has gone down, and I had to explain to them the property taxes or the property values are going up. So with that said, I mean, I would almost be in favor of looking at both options, one decreasing it and one increasing it to see if we're in dire need of an additional police officer. Would that be an area that needs to be addressed?
The millage rate cannot be increased. We set it on the DR 420 at 5.42, and that's like the maximum it could be. You can go down until the public hearings, but you can't go up from the 5.42.
Okay. And where we're at, I mean, based on our budget and the way the Budget Advisory Board recommended, that would be okay where we're at, so.
Okay. So we do not have a consensus, we leave it the way it is? Okay, what's next? We're now going to enterprise funds. Any discussions on that?
I've got a couple of questions if...
Go ahead.
Again, still relatively new in this position. The Marina falls in enterprise fund, correct?
Yesterday.
Yes.
Gulf Corps.
And my understanding is that the Marina hasn't been, it's been more of a lost leader of the city, and I don't have a full understanding of why we offer a city Marina when we have a lot of private businesses that are offering this as an option. Can someone share a little bit or shed some light on that? If we're losing money on this year over year, and then the up, the updates that are required and the capital improvements and so on, I'd just like some more information on this.
Ron, why don't you talk about where it is, and then Tom can talk about what improvements we're making, which will hopefully change that of where it's going.
Well, the revenue, it is a smaller fund. Expenses, I think, are usually averaging about 80, 90,000, but the revenues coming in are currently only about 60, 70,000. So it's been going down. Fund balance has been going about, about 20,000 a year. I projected if it keeps going like this, in, in three years, it'll be like a negative fund balance. I think a lot of, I guess, I think Tom is trying to work on, is there some slips that aren't being used right now? If they could get those, I guess, dredged out or whatever they need to do and start having a full functioning Marina, that might bring in some more revenues, but yes, it's, it doesn't have enough revenues right now to cover the expenses.
And Tom, you want to talk about what you're doing and how that, which is the direction of the commission to do, the direction of past commissions would be to make these improvements to hope we can make it more viable? So you want to talk about that's already budgeted and you're presently doing?
We're presently in rehabbing the Marina as of speak. The building itself is being rehabbed, new restrooms, including for the boaters, eventually dredging it. We do have a couple of slips that are unusable right below the corner of the existing building. And then eventually, we're going to put in new slips in. With the new slips, we believe that we'll be able to get more transient boaters in. We have some limitations on transient boaters. That's where, that's where the revenue comes in with the transient boaters in there.
Okay. That's a pretty neat, actually, now you bring that up, that's a pretty neat opportunity for people to come in and...
Yes, it is, yes, yes.
And visit our sponge docks in the city.
We have seen uptick in traffic lately because of, of course, the economy's turning around over there, but, yes.
Thanks.
Welcome.
I just said, oh, yeah, you can add on that.
I was just going to add something to that about the Marina. Yeah, I appreciate the work that's being done, and it's very necessary. I hear all the time people wanting to come, transient boaters wanting to come and have a place to dock, and we don't have enough space. So I think it's important that we do have spaces for transient boaters to bring people in by water, so.
We are doing the repairs in the house, too.
Yes, I see that.
Yeah.
I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I think there's quite a need for, for the Marina because, you know, we have a great waterfront to come up, the river and stuff, and people do want to come for the day or for a long weekend or something. And I know years past that we weren't really charging, and nobody was using it, it was kind of rundown. So I think once we start charging a regular fee, I think, I think we're going to see the Marina heavily used, and we will make some money on it. What, what's our, we call live aboard, is that, do we allow live aboard?
No, there's, there's a two-week maximum stay.
That's what it is, okay. Okay, because we have somebody that's doing a live aboard off the grid. Yeah, yeah. That's why I was just, I was just kind of wondering what, what are. So they stay two weeks, do you have, is it just a daily rate that we'll charge, or would we charge a weekly rate?
We give them a discount for more than, you get seven days for pay of six. That's how it works out. We don't have the services, and if you want to add the services for pump out for live boards, then that would change the permitting over there, and that's a whole different issue. Permitting marinas.
It's also going to be the home for our fire boat, right?
Yes, it is, yes. That's part of the plan, yes.
And how many slips are we looking at?
We have, we have 21 actual slips. We only have 19 usable ones. Two of them are actually unusable.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Actually, we do have quite a few people that stay for more than a week, I've noticed, that are there for...
Yeah, we see my transits are like usually 10 to 12 days. They stay pretty close to the end. I'll have them leave and come back a little while later.
Right.
Many returns, yes.
Do we have a lot of customers coming in for a day, just to come and enjoy the area and leave?
Yeah, we do, we do get quite, not as many as we do a few, three or four days, but we have quite a few that come in just for the day, for, you know, for, some just for four or five hours, and we do have a smaller fee on that. I wish I got more four or five hours, we can really turn some revenue over there, but we do get some.
What are we charging, by the way?
I think it's $10 an hour, if, up to a certain hour, then after eight hours, we just charge them for the full day, and it saves them a couple bucks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Still have the floor?
With the golf course, I know our golf course has been improved tremendously over the past 10 years or so, from having a lot of sandy areas to being a nice green area. I know Commissioner Kicked, I mentioned something along the lines of improving the golf course, and this might fall under the capital side, but I don't know. The concession area, it sounds like a great opportunity for a beautiful spot to oversee and create some additional revenue for the city as well, so I would be in support of something along those lines.
Thank you.
Does the city waste yard fall under enterprise fund? Yeah. So I just had a quick question with the Mears project, is the scale, the scale house is moving, my understanding, right? Is that in this budget or previous budget, or is that with the Mears project?
The, the scale house right now is prepared to go out to engineering for moving the scale house over to the yard, over to the closed landfill, yes.
Okay. What about all the other, like, recycling bins and those also, is that being moved to that area, too, or is that going to stay in that?
No, my ultimate plan is to use that as another drop-off site for recycling. Still utilize that same lot.
Okay.
And then just move the scale across, across the road.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, our enterprise funds actually are pretty healthy. The water and sewer doing well, the sanitation fund is doing well, the stormwater is doing well, golf course and the Marina is the only two that are, they were struggling, but now they're improving, so I think we're in good shape. Commissioner Silver, you have something?
No more comments.
You have comments? No comments here? Okay, thank you. We are now going to the CIP program. Commissioner Kicked, you want to start with that?
I don't have any comments.
Commissioner Panther, I mean Vice Mayor Panther.
No comments.
Okay. Well, I got some things that I'd like to talk about that. From the public safety, we have budgeted $677,000 for fire truck and equipment. Is that, is that for the new fire station, or is to replace the, an old one?
The 677,000? You mean for the fire truck?
Our truck and equipment, yeah.
It's to replace an old one.
It's to replace an old one.
Yeah.
Does the new fire station has all the vehicles that they need to operate? We okay with that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this, this is part of the plan, our scheduled replacement policy for the vehicles. Actually, we're a year behind.
And this one is one we bumped for, because we have some other important projects, this is a truck that was bumped back a year.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we, so...
I just want to make sure that the, the new fire station has the, the fire trucks...
I believe it is actually going to be assigned to the new station as it works out, but we do have the program where they get replaced every, every 10 years frontline, and then five years as a backup. It's just, it's the, it's a program that we have in place.
Good, thank you. For police vehicles, we have $352,000 budgeted. Is that the addition vehicles are just for replacements, or the brand-new vehicles, chief?
Those are our replacement vehicles. Every year, we continue to replace the fleet, so they're replenishing.
Yeah. Looking the, the list doesn't say anything about equipment. Do you need any equipment?
That includes the equipment.
That includes the equipment.
Everything is included, yep.
Okay. Got to make sure they have the equipment.
Right. Yep.
Thank you. Talked about the water, um, Mr. Smith here?
Bob Robinson is taking...
Bob Robinson, okay. The water distribution and water piping replacement, we budgeted $500,000 for every year. Question that I have, is that enough because we have so much piping that needs to be replaced in order to, to make sure that we have a very good quality water coming to our customers?[1767.87]
Short answer, yes, we think it's enough.
You think it's good?
Yeah. And if we need to move monies around, we have the ability to do that, but you know, we've prioritized replacing water lines as we look into the out years here now. Now that we got our plant built, this is a, I think it's enough for now.
Okay.
And again, you'll see more of that when we do our next rate study and you're going to see some more of that, what we need to do and what our plans is for increasing those every year. So, so you'll be seeing that very soon and, uh, getting that.
Okay. Uh, for sewer collection, we are budgeted seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for sea breeze. Um, we have many sensitive areas in Tarpon Spring with, uh, septic tanks near the water, uh, bayous, the, uh, the river. I was just wondering if you, uh, if we identified all these areas that they need to be, we need to replace sewer lines and if we have, uh, an aggressive action plan? To start work on that?
Well, this is the first of, of many. Um, we don't have them particularly identified as projects, but you'll see that we do have, actually, you don't see this, but in our ten year plan, we've got budgeted line items for miscellaneous sewer expansion going out. Um, five hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand, another seven hundred and fifty thousand in, in twenty twenty-three. So we are definitely looking at that. We don't have an action plan developed just yet, but we do know that we have money in the rate plan for sewer expansion.
Yeah, uh, uh, yeah. I, I think we should be aggressive to start replacing and placing some sewer lines because many of the septic tanks have been there seventy, eighty years and that they are near the water.
Agreed.
Probably not to go ahead and say, but we talked about this. Again, the Budget Advisory Committee brought this up and we talked about it. Sea breeze has been on the list for a while, of course, as we prioritize and one of the major focal points was because of the quality of Lake Tarpin and to do those septic tanks, that's why you've seen three phases of the Lake Tarpin project. And a large amount of money because of that lake and because of the condition of that lake, that was deemed the most important priority. That being done, we are, we had sea breeze ranked as the next one. When you're dealing with all the areas you're talking about, all the areas of town by waters and stuff like that, sea breeze is the next on priority. That's why that's coming next. Probably the, the project that's come after this, now that they've done Bay Shore Heights and upgraded that sewer so it can use, we're going to be looking at, probably one of the next things you're going to be looking at is connecting those homes near the Bay Shore Heights that are on the water to there. And then as Bob said, you'll be seeing real soon the plan of where we're going from there out. Again, prioritizing it by the most, um, you know, environmentally sensitive, the ones need the water, you'll see that in the plan. Or probably this one, and you'll be seeing real soon coming with the Bay Shore Heights completing theirs to get those homes on riverside, the homeowners we promised and the whole project put up to do those. And then you'll see that plan coming forward of what we identify and for you to look at, review and have input on where we go from, from there, um, to get those areas you're talking about in our aggressive plan, which we will be putting an aggressive plan forward to get those done as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. Uh, on stormwater, we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for GIS for N P D E S. What does it mean? What's the acronym?
It's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination, uh, it's a permitting process. It's a National Pollutant Discharge, uh, part I get, I get these acronyms all messed up, but actually it's our permits.
Elimination.
Elimination system. Thank you, Bob. He's better at talking than I am, that's for sure. Uh, yeah, that's part of our permitting, uh, requirement for permitting for all your, uh, your, your, your discharge of stormwater into the, into the open waters. So N P D, the, uh, GIS is identifying where all these pipes are, uh, identifying the exact locations of where they, they, they feed out and then getting all that information over here and meeting the permit requirements.
This is something we do every year?
Yeah.
Um, we budgeted seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for stormwater on Penn Street, two hundred feet east from Gross Avenue. Is that going to help the problem that we have on, uh, Distant and, uh, Center Street?
They're all tied in. The, uh, uh, we're in the middle of engineering right now for the, uh, whole Gross Avenue, uh, project and Penn's all part of that. Uh, yes, and eventually the ones on Distant and all will feed back over. It's all part of a large stormwater action plan.
Okay, because there's the big dip.
Yeah, we know about that, but we need to, we need to address this first in order to be able to relieve that area.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, my last comment and question is the, um, business community on the Deaconess Boulevard, they have a big stormwater issue.
Yes.
And, uh, we, we discussed that in the past. It was, uh, some kind of, uh, uh, project that you were working with?
Yes.
Correct some of the problems that we have. Is that how it works?
We are working with, uh, Brian Anderson, our stormwater engineer, on multiple options. Uh, there's a lot involved, a lot more than you'd realize, but there's a lot involved, including the.
Licorice told me not to be too excited because.
It's just hard to move water when it's coming over the banks and it's hard to move it to someplace.
There's a lot of elements involved in that, uh, and then we're also learning from other municipalities and trying the same type of repair that have not been very successful, so we're trying to find the right where. I don't know if we'll get anything going to be a hundred percent, but we'll find something that should hopefully somewhere down the road to relieve some of it, yes.
To, to help as best as we can.
I don't know if I'll ever eliminate. Raise the whole street.
Thank you, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Silver, you have anything?
No questions, sir.
Let's have a couple of comments, um. I know the, the GIS stormwater, it's an important part because it, it sends a lot of water into the bayous and it's silted up the bayous a lot over the past thirty years. To where if you put your foot in the bayou right now, it's a pretty disgusting experience because it feels like you're just going into a slime, muck, um, whatever you want to call it. So, um, it is good to see that the city's mapping that out and I, I would encourage at some point that we would see some type of filtration, uh, in the stormwaters to prevent some of that getting out there and we can clean it out that way. Um, what, uh, a couple of things I see that there is like some parking lot improvements and I know, and we've got a Craig Park tennis court and parking lot improvements at the library and culture center, but, um, I, growing up in Craig Park and being around Craig Park a lot, I see the, the, they're cool looking pillars when you leave the boat ramp parking lot.
Yes.
Um, and there's a lot of people leaving some paint on those pillars. Um, as residents that are leaving with their boats or trucks or whatever you want to, multiple trailers and so on, too. Um, I would encourage the city to look at, I, I don't know if there's some historic nature to those pillars or what, but looking at moving them or, um, as an area of improvement, that would be one of the areas as well.
Sure, uh, I could, I'll give a little history on that. Uh, I moved, actually I moved the one pillar on the westbound side one time, uh, a few years back, about three foot and seems that the more you move it, the more room they need, you know, like anything else. But there was going to be a, a traffic circulation, uh, 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 study done down, down the, in that area uh, for the possibility of a walkway. We're going to look into that and see how that fits into the whole thing and see what the historical references on those, on those, those peers. I don't know what they are, but I know they've been.
You have to be careful because there is some people who are come ask for the nature of those pillars. Remember, when you even moved it, you had some repercussions.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so.
Yeah. Well, that's encouraging.
I'll come back prepared.
Um, the public works yard improvement, is that, what is that, um, going to entail?
Uh, some awnings, where we park our equipment outside, you know, of course, in the, in the, in the hot sun in Florida.
Yeah.
A, a lot of that happens to just be the hot sun on the, on the hoses, hydraulic hose on all these equipment has a tendency to dry them out, so we're actually replacing hoses on a, on a faster uh, process than we really should be, so we're going to need some sun to protect the equipment and get a little more life out of the equipment.
Okay, that's great. Um, just want to echo Vice Mayor Banther, I may have said this earlier, it's good to see that the Culture Center is having, uh, some exterior renovations done um, on the capital side. Uh, I do see that there's wood rot in the windows and it is kind of embarrassing to see that. Um, another thing I may encourage, uh, city manager and some of the city staff maybe look at in the future is to try to tap more into the state budget. Um, after I saw the list of items that are on the state budget, uh, for example, I think the Fire Station Seventy, uh, new building might be a good idea to look at that in the future to add it to the state budget and see if we could get some type of state funds. Um, instead of looking at a, a general fund or capital improvement, uh, project or penny money at some point. Um, and also to continue to look at other projects where if it's, if it's parks or if it's, um, roadways or whatever it may be, um, to go after state money because, uh, there is a lot of state money up there and I think we could work better together at lobbying for that money um, with our state officials, um, so we don't have to take the full brunt of all the costs ourselves of the city. And I'm willing to, uh, help and lobby wherever I can to do that as well. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Well, we finished with the agenda tonight, uh, in closing, uh, again, I'd like to, uh, thank our staff. Mr. Licorice, thank you for your leadership. Our Budget Advisory Committee and everyone who's been involved with the, uh, uh, with our budget this year. Well, that concludes the budget, uh, work session tonight and it's eight twenty-eight.
Roger.
Yeah, 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 come a little bit, I'm leaving about ten forty. For the city manager, come a little bit early because I got. Thank you very much.